All right, council, we are live. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, bienvenue and 안녕. I'd like to thank our media and broadcast partners who are here this evening covering the meeting, those who are covering it from afar. I'd like to begin by acknowledging with respect that we are in Robinson here on Treaty Territory and that the land on which we are gathered is the traditional territory of the Anishnaabe and known as Bawating. Bawating is home to Garden River First Nation, Vatjuana First Nation, and the historic Sault Ste. Marie Métis Council. Madam Clerk? All in favor? Oh, Counselor Scott's not here. All in favor? That carries.
That's a well.
All in favor? That carries. And? Counselor Dufour? Counselor Dufour's declaration of pecuniary interest on item number 5.3 as he is an employee of the Social Services Board. Anyone else seeing none? Madam Clerk, that brings us to the delegations.
So?
Welcome to council, Ms. Barrett.
Thank you very much. Hey, everyone. I'm Karina Barrett, General Manager of the Sault Ste. Marie Region Conservation Authority. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here with me today. So in line with new legislation, the Conservation Authority must break down our programs into three categories. Category one are those programs that are mandated, such as flood control and permit developing, sorry, development permitting. Category two are those programs that are not mandatory but are requested by the municipality. This includes seasonal maintenance of some city properties and the risk management-related services we have. Category three are not mandatory programs and typically would not require a levy to support the program itself. So for 2026, we are anticipating an overall budget increase of 1.43% for 2026. This is a breakdown of the wages and benefits, admin, operations, and capital projects. Increases to wages include a CPI increase to staff wages as well as the hiring of a seasonal operations helper, but this is partially offset by changeovers in staff. There is also a new part-time staff position to aid in the community-based monitoring in the Upper Great Lakes project in partnership with Nordic, which does not affect the levy. These changeovers in staff are also represented in the administration side of the expenses, showing a slight decrease. So we've had longstanding employees who are no longer with us. We look at the expenses of the Conservation Authority. The breakdown is that 70% of the budget is made up of wages and benefits for 6.6 full-time equivalents. 19% is administration, 8% is operations, and 3% is for a capital reserve. Administration includes taxes, fees, utilities, licenses, travel, training, committees, insurance, outreach, and partnership development, whereas operations is the on-the-ground work we do, including flood forecasting and warning, channel maintenance, dam maintenance, and those repairs that are involved. And when we look at our overall revenue, we can see the breakdown between the province, our levies with City of Sault Ste. Marie and Prince Township, our provincial funding, our generated revenues, as well as our development regs, and our external funding from the Canada Water Agency. So we're looking at a 3.04% increase to the City of Sault Ste. Marie's levy this year. The majority of the increases that we see would be to the wages and admins category in our breakdown. When looking at our revenue sources, the City of Sault Ste. Marie is our greatest revenue source, is 65% of our budget, followed by the Drinking Water Source Protection Program through the province, which is 14%. Next is our provincial funding for the flood and hazard-related operations, 7%, and then our self-generated development-related regulations at 4%. The remainder of the funding sources range between 3% and 1% and include Prince levy, our capital ask, as well as our special agreements, and miscellaneous. When considering the budget, we made sure to include the continuation of our annual programming, along with an increase to our seasonal staff capacity, continued staff training and travel, and committee work as well. And as mentioned previously, we have new funding for the community-based monitoring in the Upper Great Lakes project, which will not affect the levy. Ongoing financial pressures include continued increases to goods and services, especially the cost of fuel and utilities, and anticipated increase in our insurance, because this year we actually saw a significant decrease, so we expect that to be balanced out, and the potential changeovers in staffing that we have coming up. We made sure to include our self-generated revenue, which has been estimated and incorporated into the budget to help offset the totally levy ask for 2026. The capital levy ask is to be placed in a capital reserve account dedicated to future-related capital projects. And overall, the 2026 budget reflects the short-term objectives of the authority and considers the long-term requirements to ensure the Conservation Authority can provide sustainable benefits to the watershed residents. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Councilor Spina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. A lot of, I see a lot of decreases in certain areas here, and you mentioned one of the areas was decreased because you had a reduction in staff that are no longer with the Conservation Authority. Is there a risk that those are positions that will be refilled and just aren't being budgeted for right now, or are those positions lately gone?
So it's been changeover in staff, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a changeover in staff, so they have been replaced. It's just that the previous people in that position had been with the Conservation Authority for quite some time. So the replacements are entering the workforce as opposed to at the top end of their.
Of the pay spectrum. Okay, so it's not that you're leaving potential positions out of this budget?
Nope, and we made sure to do crossover training for a significant amount of time.
Thank you, that was my only concern, thanks.
Sir Hollingsley?
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Ms. Karina Barrett. I just want to say, as the Chair of the Conservation Authority, to you and your team, you have been working extremely hard behind the scenes, and I just want to make sure that you and the rest of the team are basically showing appreciation. I just want to also highlight, you don't talk enough about what all the great work you do. So under operations, can you expand, does the operation portion of the budget, does that include education to the public? Does it include any other programs?
So the majority of the operations is the on-the-ground work that is being done. Administration would usually cover the education and outreach, but we also have stewardship. We have, I apologize, I'm printing a blank. But we do have additional programs and services that aren't covered specifically under operations. That would be mostly the work that is done by the operations team, which is the maintenance of the flood control channels and the maintenance of our properties. But we do have additional programs where we offer residents services, which would also be included under the administration portion, which is why our administration is quite high.
Right, I just want to give you this opportunity to highlight those other pieces, such as the building permits. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this year we are pretty much on par to last year, if not a little bit more in the building permits.
Yeah, so we did, that would be covered under our operations, you're correct. And our permitting and development regulations, we're seeing a steady increase over the last few years, especially since COVID. And we've been keeping up to the pace. And it, yeah, it's, for us, it's a source of revenue that does continue to grow. We do anticipate a slight reduction next year, just because we have seen kind of a year-over-year increase. And there is predictions that there might be some slowing down of building within the next year or so, so we just wanted to make sure that was appropriately reflected in the budget. But we do anticipate to still see numbers as high as we've seen in recent years.
Great, so just to understand, it is, gives us revenue, the building permits?
Yes, yes.
Okay, along on the same idea, with regards to the grants, I think in the past we used, had grants from TD Bank, for example, for trees and so forth. Do you anticipate any more grants?
Not necessarily through TD, but yes, we do see some grants coming through. We've recently applied for some funding through Enbridge. We also work closely with the Maintenance Unit Ontario, they actually helped us do some tree planting this year, as opposed to through the TD Tree Planting Program. We work closely with our community members and organizations to try and find those partnerships that helps us continue doing the programs that we do without it costing the city additional money.
Okay, good to know. And you said Enbridge, I think.
Yeah, we just applied for some funding for Enbridge. We have a project that we're working on, actually, the city just provided some funding for, through the Green Initiatives Fund, or a monitoring, a bio-monitoring program. So we're looking to expand that a little bit as well.
Okay, and I believe you also did some tree planting on Landscape Hill, the old ski hill?
Landslide.
Landslide, thank you. And with regards to other revenue generator, I believe that we are doing very well in renting out the Sugar Shack?
Yeah, yes, so, community members are able to rent not just our conservation areas, but our Sugar Shack as well, for, whether it's for birthday parties, for retirement parties. Sometimes we have organizations that will have their AGMs. And so that is available for rental for the community. It's also where the Kwanis Pancake breakfast typically takes place in the fall and the spring. So quite a few people have good memories of being in that area.
Definitely.
But we also allow weddings and photography and filmmaking in our conservation areas as well.
Okay, again, other ways that we have been trying to generate more revenue, so we're not depending on the city totally.
Exactly.
And last point, you mentioned partnerships. Correct me if I'm wrong, through you, Mayor, to Karina, Ms. Barrett. We have a really good partnership with our mountain biking, Travis Anderson, Mr. Anderson, and we also have strong partnerships with the Sault Ste. Marie High Watha Ski Club and so forth. Is that correct?
That is very correct, yes. Yes, we have close relationships with both the second club and the ski club, and they have been paramount in ensuring that our trails are maintained to the high level and standard that they are. So we definitely, we consider those relationships extremely important, but it's also that opportunity for the community to get out and really experience nature.
Okay, including the adventure bus. So thank you again for all you do, and just want to put a plug in there that the Conservation Authority wants to just reiterate that we care about the environment and we care about basically our own backyard. And once again, thank you to Mr. Anderson for doing a great job with mountain biking trails. It also brings people into our backyard, which creates a little bit more revenue for the community. Thank you, that's all.
Anyone else on item 5.2? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Thank you very much for your time.
Under Agenda Item 5.3, the Sault Ste. Marie District Social Services Administration Board and Mike Nadeau, CEO, and Katie Kirkham, Chief Paramedic Services, are in attendance.
Welcome to council, Mr. Nadeau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We're very glad to be here. I've asked paramedic chiefs, Katie Kirkham, to also attend and to speak about any of the highlights within the paramedic services budget. So with that, I just wanted to provide an overview. The District of Sault Ste. Marie Social Services Administration Board provides services within the Sault Ste. Marie, the City of Sault Ste. Marie Township, Prince Township, and all the way out to Montreal River. We used a weighted assessment approach whenever we're determining the levy. The City of Sault Ste. Marie is levied 88.23% of the municipal portion, Prince Township 1.98%, and Tummo up north is 9.79% of the levy apportionment. Factors impacting our 2026 budget this year: funding cuts from Ontario and Canada, expanded paramedic services in 2025, continued rising costs on many goods and services, CP enhancements, and health benefit coverages are also increased. Globally, the DSAB has a budget of just Globally, the DSAB has a budget of just over $100 million. Of that, approximately $25.2 million is levied for the municipal tax base. So approximately one quarter of our budget comes from municipalities, and 75% or three-quarters comes from the province of Ontario and the federal government. Over the last 10 years, our municipal budget levy has averaged 2.43%. We are providing this slide to highlight the impacts that the pandemic has had on our business. It's, as demonstrated in this slide, it's significantly impacted the way that the DSAB has been able to manage the demands. So we have a mandate to provide four core areas: Ontario Works, Early Years, Social Housing, Homelessness, and Paramedic Services. I'm just going to provide a high-level overview of Ontario Works. The program is currently undergoing provincial employment service transformation, which has resulted in a provincial funding cut of $293,000 for 2026. Our caseload average is 1,717 individuals or unique families. This is projected to rise 10% in 2026 by the province of Ontario, however, we believe that it will be higher as a result of the local economy and the impact of tariffs. Ontario Works Program Administration is intended to be funded at a 50-50 cost share. Currently, we are at 49% provincial and 51% municipal. This slide outlines that our core spending increased 0.17% in 2026. However, as a result of the cuts that we received, the municipal portion is up 10.94%. Last year, we were down 5.48% in this line, in this division. We decreased by six FTEs last year within this division as anticipating to try to transition into the modernization. Within our Housing Services Division, we have a service-level standard to fund 1,869 housing units across the community through 13 nonprofits and co-ops. We have an internal target of 1,879 to account for any vacancies or folks that achieve market rent through higher income sources. In this division, cumulatively since 2019, we have received a funding reduction of $358,000 in federal transfer. This is projected to be $1.7 million less by 2030. The federal transfer keeps going down, and it's just not being replaced by the federal government. We have 1,904 individuals or families on the waitlist for social housing, and families will wait as long as five years. The DSAB also is the sole owner and operator of the Sault Ste. Marie Housing Corporation. We offer 821 affordable or RGI units. We also offer 126 full-market rental units as a strategy to increase revenue and offset municipal budget pressures. Our market rentals average on an annual basis, it's dependent, but between $150,000 and $200,000 a year we earn, that goes directly to offset the municipal levy. This is a really unique slide, and it's an important slide for council. Within housing, $3.6 million is provided to the DSAB by the federal government. Reminder, that is projected to decrease by $1.7 million over the next five years, or four budget years. Provincially, we receive $5.3 million or 23% of the budget. The municipalities provide 13.8% or 61% of the housing budget. So this is the biggest cost driver for the municipal levy, is the housing budget within the DSAB. We are also acutely aware of the local homelessness crisis and mental health addiction substance use crisis that we're having. In 2016, we did our first point-in-time count, where we count homelessness individuals within the community. There were 74 people at that time that we identified as homeless. In 2024, the last count that we released data on, it was at 421. There's been a 468% increase in homelessness individuals in our community since 2016. It's an unsustainable trend. Our current shelter capacity, we have 30 beds for women, family, and youth, and those are at or near capacity every evening. For men, we have 22 beds, shelter beds for men. It operates at 25, so it's operating over capacity every single night of the year. In 2018, we had 10 supportive housing units within our portfolio. Currently, we have 66 housing units that are supported within the portfolio with plans to bring on an additional 34 by the end of 2028. Our housing services expenses were up from 25 to 26, 0.34% on spend. And when we factor in the, there was some increases that have been provided in the homelessness front, however, we're experiencing decreases on the operating front of the rent subsidy. So we have a 0.54% increase year-over-year in the housing services and homelessness division. Our Early Years Division looks after childcare and early on. There's been significant funding growth in this division through the Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Program. Currently, we have 1,940 childcare spaces that are provided to the community through 11 providers. We just did an update this fall of the children on the waitlist. There are 1,680 unique children waiting for childcare within the community. Some good news, because there's been a lot of negative press on the childcare struggles that we've had, we have plans to add 103 new spaces in 2026. We can't talk about the locations yet, but we have board approval to move into a unique direction, which will take some of the pressure off parents and children in our community. Our Early Years Division, the spend is up 0.08%. And the funding is frozen within that division, and we factor in just the wage increases on the staff, it works out to 2.07% on, within that division. And now I'm going to ask my colleague, Chief Katie Kirkham, to take us to the paramedic services slides.
Welcome to council, Ms. Kirkham.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here to speak about the paramedic services budget and its impact on the overall DSAB budget. I want to explain some of the key pressures driving these increases. Specifically, the rise in emergency call volume in our community, changes in call complexity, the addition of a new shift, and growing pressures on our workforce due to WSIB, sick leave, and parental leaves. So our call volume has increased significantly over the last few years. To give you an idea, in 2020, we responded to 17,484 emergency calls in the community, and by 2025 year-end, we are projecting that we will have responded to approximately 24,000 calls, and that's a 37% increase. As call volumes rise, it directly impacts how many ambulances we need to, need available to respond to the community, and how often those ambulances are tied up on calls. We've also seen changing nature of calls. So we see our community healthcare needs changing, where we are responding to more calls involving chronic illness, mental health issues, toxic drug use, and both intentional and unintentional injuries. These types of calls are often taking longer, they're more complex, and they reduce how many ambulances we have at any given time. As these pressures grow across the health and social sectors, more individuals are accessing care through 911 and paramedic services. We've had some deployment changes recently. In 2024, we presented some of these pressures to the DSAB board and recommended adding a new truck, a new 12-hour truck in 2025. They approved this addition and agreed to plan for implementation in 2025. That new shift became operational in September 2025, and it's now part of our daily schedule. In 2025, we used reserves to help offset the municipal budget impact of adding this vehicle, but this was only a temporary solution and not sustainable long-term. In 2026, we are now seeing the full impact of this shift addition, and it's reflected in the levy. This accounts for a significant portion of our budget increase. Alongside call volume growth, we are experiencing rising pressures among paramedic staff. Being a paramedic is extremely fulfilling work, but it's a difficult job. We're seeing increased WSIB claims due to both physical injury and psychological strain. Sick leave has also increased, which means more backfilling and staffing costs. Parental leave usage has grown in our workforce, as our workforce demographic shifts, which is positive, but it creates additional staffing vacancies that must be covered. These pressures do not reduce service demand, they just increase the cost required to maintain service levels, because we still need to staff the ambulances every day. So part of our budget impact is an increase in the number of part-time hours used for this coverage. When we add a vehicle or when we need to cover vacancies due to WSIB, sick leave, or parental leave, the costs are ongoing and not a one-time impact. In 2026, the increases in paramedic services represents a 9.43% impact on the municipal levy, which translates to $554,648. Reserves helped temporarily soften that impact last year, but they are not sustainable funding source. The levy now reflects the true annual cost of maintaining service coverage in the face of rising call volume and workforce pressures. And I'm going to pass it back over to Mike to do the consolidated budget. Thank you.
We just wanted to end again, and we're presenting the municipal portion of the budget, which was $25.9 million, but we'll just ask Mayor or members of council if there's any questions on any specific line or any of the operations that we've spoken about here tonight.
Well, thank you for the detailed presentation. Counsel, are there any questions? Counselor Gerty?
Thanks for coming by and presenting the information. Mr. Nado, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Nado, you had mentioned that federal funding, along with provincial funding, is down this year, correct?
Correct.
Now, in the federal budget, I think the federal government announced somewhere around $1 billion for transitional slash supportive housing, I think it was more transitional housing. A lot of it focused on ending encampments. Have you been, with the, two questions, I guess, through you, Mr. Mayor. One is, will you be receiving any of those funds? And two, if you are, we're still getting less from the feds than we otherwise would have?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gerty. It's a great question. So there's, since the time of download in the 2000s, there's been federal operational transfer grant, and it's been decreasing. That's the money that we're talking about that helps us pay rent supplement. It's for units already in the system, 1869. The $1 billion you're talking about, the transitional dollars, that's coming out now. It was just announced on Saturday evening or Sunday. Some of the parameters are on Build Canada Homes. We fully intend on applying for those dollars. We have active applications into CMHC right now, but those are more capital in nature and not the operations. But we're looking at a portfolio build, because historically, Northern Ontario has not fared as well compared to the large urban centers. So we're trying a unique approach, that all the DSABs are pooling our resources together, and we're asking for $500 million to come to Northern Ontario that we can allocate across, that we can start to bring some core affordable housing. So we have changed them, we're trying a portfolio, we need 935 units collectively, of which around 248 I'm asking for to come to the city of Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gerty. Counselor Hollings?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Mr. Nado, I just want to give you a lot of credit. You have the heaviest load on your shoulders since I've been working closely with you in social services, and as you clearly outlined in your presentation in tonight, homelessness, mental health issues, and your colleague has said it's on the rise, and it's not going, it's not trending down. So first, I want to give you my appreciation for all the hard work that you both do, your team behind you. I wish your team was here. Everyone in this community knows that it's on the rise, so. But having said that, I just want to acknowledge all of your work. On page two of your presentation, can you just remind me, the levy allocation, can you define again, TWO, I think, what was it, PM or something? Can you define that again?
Yeah, and Meghuch, thank you for the compliment. Our team works tirelessly, and your words matter to them immensely. So TUMO stands for Territory Without Municipal Organization. So that's the townships up north around Pancake Bay, Hayden, et cetera, where there's no municipal government. They still, we still issue a tax levy, but that levy is, it's paid on, they're paid through their privileged taxes. Ontario provides with that levy on behalf of those residents out there.
Okay. I think that's important for us to define, because you are a Goma, and we know that we have the paramedics that will go up to Guli, for example, Search Mount, and you mentioned Garden River and so forth. So I just want to make sure that the public knew and understands that it's not just Prince, it's not just Sault Ste. Marie, but it's the surrounding areas. Is that correct?
Yeah, our service goes all the way north to Montreal River, is a really good catch basin for the community, and kind of everywhere in between.
That's huge.
It's a significant, it's a lot of pressure to try to make sure that we're getting to people who need our help, but like I said, my colleague and her team do amazing work, and we're in good hands.
Okay. And just to make sure that we are clear, when you look at, again, the levy allocation, it does not include Garden River, Batchwana, they don't provide any levy. Is that correct?
So we struggled with what to present here tonight, because the DSAB budget is large, and it's multifaceted, and it's, a funding cut on the DSAB does not equate to a municipal dollar cut. It's cents in the dollars, sometimes none. Garden River First Nation, we provide EMS coverage to Garden River, Batchwana, and Rankin, and the Garden River base is 100% paid by the province of Ontario, and there's a provincial apportionment that's provided on behalf of our First Nation neighbors for the services that we're providing. It's not coming from the tax base here.
Okay, thank you. It's important to just clarify that.
Yeah.
And when you say services, we talked about the ambulance services, paramedics, but services also include basically employment services for outside Sault Ste. Marie. I mean, you have offices that are helping the Guli, Search Mount, all the way up to Montreal River and elsewhere with.
Yeah, our jurisdiction is a bit complex. So for paramedic services, we're Garden River to Montreal River, and everywhere in between. For Ontario Works, housing, and early years, we're from the city of Sault Ste. Marie, Prince Township and north, but the First Nations have their own delivery services that assist with housing, childcare, and Ontario Works in their communities. We're transitioning out of the employment, and that was why we received the $293,000 funding cut, even though we've done a deep dive, and our office is accountable to get 98% of the employment outcomes currently achieved by people in Ontario Works, our case managers receive, and the funding is being reduced by the province for.
Okay, so your portfolio is slightly changing.
It's, it's, it's modernizing is the word.
Okay. So having said that, again, I just want to close off by reiterating that we know as a community, all of you do a lot of work, and I hope that through Mayor and through Mr. Ver, that you can come back and share some of these other programs that you are offering to basically help educate the community on what you are doing around homelessness and mental health. I think there's a lot of good work that is not getting out there, we're not getting the message out there.
I agree that there needs to be a better job in communicating what we do, and we would be pleased to come back at any time that works for our collective schedules.
Okay. And just one final question, myth or not, a constituent did email me and say, do we have people coming to us on a bus where we have to, from other, outside of the Goma area?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a very complex question. So the homeless population is transient and mobile across the community. So there are folks from other communities that will come into Sault Ste. Marie, just like there's people from Sault Ste. Marie who will move to other jurisdictions, but there is no known active strategy to send people, you know, in north. It's just, yeah, I think, when we speak to our provincial colleagues, that seems to be a myth that's perpetuated across the province of Ontario, and I just think it's because of the rise in homelessness that people are seeing, that people are having a hard time understanding just the scale of the problem. So the only way that it sometimes makes sense is that other folks must be coming here, but it's a national crisis.
Right. So again, I know I put you on the spot, but it's important to use this time to educate our community. And again, Mr. Nado, you do a great job in doing delegations in Ottawa at Queen's Park. You have many, many pilot projects that you bring to Queen's Park that has been implemented worldwide, well, Canada-wide. So kudos to you and your team, and I learned a lot on how to do delegations through you. So thank you for what you do.
Meghuch, thanks.
Counselor Vazuelo? Counselor Vezzellal.
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Chief Kirkham. Chief, regarding the provincial funding allocation of 5 point, just over 5.6 million, can you kindly describe how that funding is determined and what that funding can be used for through paramedic services?
Sure. So the funding is determined, the 5 million-plus funding is determined by the year before budget on the municipal levy, or the, sorry, the year before budget that the paramedic services has. So what we have in 2024 will impact the amount of funding that we receive in 2025. It is a 50-50 cost share between the levy and the provincial government.
And are there parameters on that funding, or is it just to go, put towards the overall global cost of EMS services?
It is to go towards the overall global cost of EMS services.
Okay. Thank you. And if you could kindly just highlight the latest initiative that you did in terms of community paramedicine and the partnership with Suri Hospital, and how that was funded to provide all of the flu shots and all the inoculations that you just conducted?
Sure. Now, the community paramedicine funding is 100% funded through the Ministry of Health and Ontario Health, and that money is to go towards community initiatives. And what we've done in the community paramedic program is offered mass vaccination clinics to vaccinate people against RSV, flu, and COVID. And our community paramedic team, and actually our full paramedic team, has really taken this initiative to heart, and they're trying to vaccinate as many people as they can out in the community because we know that that's proactive and reduces the amount of strain and pressure that we see in the emergency, sorry, emergency services, but also broadly in the healthcare services.
Thank you. And I think just my last question for you, Chief, before I go on to Mr. Naddo, is what do you think is the number one biggest challenge, not just for you as chief, but also just in providing paramedic services throughout our community currently?
Oh, that's a tough question. I think, I think that healthcare services and social services are so intertwined, and the impacts of one really affect the other. And so I would say that that's probably our greatest pressure. When there are housing crises and homelessness pressures, we see that manifest in emergency call volume. When there are pressures in the healthcare system, when we see them in the hospital, that directly impacts emergency services. It's a real synergy between all of the different community organisations, and it really, that's the struggle, is to, is to really keep that balance.
Thank you so much. Mr. Naddo, could you kindly give an overview as to the 66 supportive housing units? What a supportive housing unit is? And what is our shortfall in terms of need of supportive housing units throughout the portfolio?
Well, in short, a supportive housing unit depends on what the individual requires. But their, a supportive housing unit is intended to help someone remain in independent living, providing them with support. It could be bathing supports, it could be medication reminders, it could be help with cleaning, it could be helping with employment transitioning. So it's kind of, there's support systems designed, and each building or each unit is kind of set up a little bit differently. So you, in an ideal world, you'd triage, and you would assign people based on acuity of need. Some people need intensive 24/7 supports, other people may just need a little bit of a lighter touch on the 24/7. So it's really dependent on the individual. It could be PSW, it could be nursing services, et cetera. We try to make sure that the person remains housed and is successful in their tenancy. We have a target internally of trying to get to 100 units within the DSEB. There is a report that I believe will come in, will become into council through the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan and become to the DSEB board. I won't speak to it to get ahead of it, but it will outline the number of supporting housing units and the cost of providing services to meet, to meet the demand. We were part of AMO's review of the homelessness system, and based on that report that was released last year, Ontario needed to provide $11 billion in funding over 10 years to end chronic homelessness within the province of Ontario. So it's, it's not a complex problem. It's a very expensive solution to the problem, and that's what we're trying to manage on a daily basis.
Thank you. And just in terms of the just over 1,700 people that we have on Ontario Works, could you kindly highlight exactly what an Ontario Works recipient would receive on a monthly basis, individual, family?
I'm not up to speed on the rates of families in full transparency, but an individual, a single adult in receipt of Ontario Works will receive up to $733 a month, depending if they have shelter costs. So it's, the rates have not increased in many, many, many years. They're wholly inadequate, and quite frankly, it's contributing directly to the homelessness problem that we are seeing because the rates are not keeping pace, and people just get behind, and it's just, it just becomes a vicious circle. But the rates within Ontario Works are very, very low. I don't know what the couples' costs are, but a single person is up to the maximum of $733 a month.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being on the DSEB board. It's very fulfilling, also sometimes very difficult. And thank you to you and Chief Kirkham for being here tonight.
We have an amazing team.
Counselor Spina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few short questions. First, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Chief Kirkham. And I'll have some questions for Mr. Naddo as well, but my questions will be surrounding the budget and basically the ROI or return on investment for the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie, what we're getting. I think it's important for people to understand that there are significant returns that, in community safety, that we are getting as a result of the expenses that are being made. So in paramedic services, and I know you may not know exact numbers here today, but generally speaking, can we talk about these investments that have been made with the additional vehicle on the road, the additional paramedics on the road? How has that translated into lower wait times for individuals who need care, and in particular, lower wait times at Suri Hospital in transfer?
Absolutely. So every year, we track our response times throughout the community, and we have response time goals. And we, everything that we do in our deployment, in our, in our structure, our overall structure, is aimed at trying to reduce those response times. So by adding another vehicle, we are able to respond to the community quicker. We're able to get to your loved ones and apply care as quickly as we can, and in turn, either treat you on scene or take you to the hospital. It means that when you call 911, we have an ambulance to respond to you. I don't know if any of you have been in an emergency situation, but sometimes that wait, waiting for someone to respond and help you is very hard to take. And so having the appropriate deployment levels available to the community is everything. If we are all tied up on another call, all of our resources are being used, that means that we don't have anyone to respond out to the community. And it's, and it's not just adding resources that we do to mitigate some of these volumes and some of these pressures. We work very closely with our community partners within our team at DSEB to try to find initiatives that we can use of the resources that we already have to fix some of the problems. Case in point, the hospital. We've been working very closely with the hospital. They're a fantastic partner to reduce offload delays, which is something that everybody is familiar with. And I'm, and I'm happy to say that there has been significant improvement there. And, and that's just one example.
Do you recall what the last numbers were on offload delays at the hospital on wait time, roughly?
I'm very happy to report that we're looking at about a five-minute wait time, which is significant. To give you an idea, we were looking at about 140 to 150 minutes not that long ago. So the work that the hospital done, has done, has been astronomical. And we, we also try to support them in any way we can by working with other community partners to bring people to care that is more appropriate than the emergency department.
Thank you. So basically, these funds have helped you increase these strategic partnerships, especially with our hospital, who's been doing a fantastic job partnering with you to help reduce those wait times. And just so we're clear, those wait times have gone from 140 minutes to less than five minutes, which means now those paramedics are back on the road servicing our community faster and in a better way than we were not that long ago.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's fantastic news. And that would be all for you. Thank you, Mr. Naddo. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Naddo. I'm not sure what page it is. I think it's page 14 on your slide deck. You don't have to refer to it. Basically, you're showing an increase from, from 74 pit count to 421 in a very, very, very short period of time, eight years or so. So about a 500% change in homelessness. One of the numbers I think that is lost in our community is, when we see stats like this, is the fact that during that time, while people are, while these numbers of homelessness are increasing, your team is actually housing a huge number of people as well.
Right.
So do we know roughly in that time how many people your team have housed? Or, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that your team is doing that work even though these numbers are increasing. They just can't keep up?
I don't have that information. I know that we get regular reports accordingly on the number of individuals that our team has got housed. And we are making progress. We're getting people housed that are living in shelter, that are from the streets. Just the number, the increase has been, has been higher than the ability to respond. But we can come back to council and provide that information because there is some good news, you know, buried in that. And one of the things that we've done strategically, just a shift that we're doing internally, I believe fundamentally that the housing, the homelessness crisis is a healthcare crisis. And if we believe that, we started planning within the seating and leadership team, and we're making a structural change rather than having homelessness reported to the operations and the housing, the people that operate the housing units. Chief Kirkham has agreed to take on the homelessness portfolio so that she can start to try to bridge the gap on the healthcare equity lens to make sure that there's healthcare services. And she just speaks a different language with healthcare providers, and we've been able to get people out of shelter and into homes as a result of this, just this shift in tactics. So once the homelessness report is done in 2026, Chief Kirkham will also be leading the homelessness division as well.
Wonderful. So like, like the investments made in EMS services where wait times have been reduced and people are getting services much faster, similarly, the investments that our community is making in housing and social services means even though these numbers are on the rise, people are getting housed faster and in a better, more efficient way?
People are being housed. The encampments, as they're found, are being responded to promptly. We're trying to encourage people to get into the system. I speak to my colleagues across the province. I always say that there's a provincial crisis, national crisis. We care immensely about the city of Sault Ste. Marie. It may not seem like it, but compared to some of the other challenges that other communities are facing, ours are lessened, but they are massive. And it's, our team cares. We have a whole team that is just dedicated to try to get people housed, and that's all that they're doing, you know, Monday to Friday, going in Saturdays, Sundays. A great partnership through CMHA. There, there is some progress being made, but unfortunately, we don't release names. So the community doesn't often see when we get somebody housed and they remain housed after 12 months because they're seeing someone else that is still struggling. So they don't equate Joe to Adam, even though Joe may have been housed, they're seeing Adam, and they think that nothing's being done. But it, it keeps us up at night to try to figure this out.
Wonderful. Well, that's, that's great news. Thank you. It's, I think it's important for constituents to know that there is a significant return on the investments they're making in social services and housing. So thank you for being here. Thank you for presenting and answering questions.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Spina. Counselor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Naddo. On one of your slides, it says the housing services funding framework, the federal is at 16%, the provincial's at 23%, and the municipal is at 61%. Has the municipal gone up significantly in the last couple of years?
It ebb and flows.
And are there governments reducing?
So the federal government is reducing its, its spend in housing subsidies. And they were going to reduce their spend in homelessness services, but there was a significant advocacy effort that happened. So it really ebb and flows, but the municipal, the municipal portion has not gone down, and especially on the direct operations. Where there has been additional investment is by the province or the feds, has been in the homelessness services front. But the, the direct operation on the 1,869 units that we operate, that has indeed gone down through provincial and federal transfers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Bruni. Other councillors? Counselor Knick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief Kirkham and Mr. Naddo. Thank you so much for your presentation today. I think this gives our residents a lot of information that they didn't know about. I'm really happy to have you guys here. I'm really happy you came because the last couple, three budgets, you were absent. And I think that's part of the misconceptions people had about DSEB. And I think you were able to clearly present tonight what you guys are here to do, how you're doing it, and how it's all funded. And I think that transparency goes a long way in us educating our Saulteys about how it works and what you're doing. Like you said, you house somebody for 12 months, but they still see somebody on the street, right? They're only focusing on what they see in front of them, not what's happening behind the scenes. So I think that's really great, and I'm really happy you were able to come here today. And all my questions have already been asked by other councillors, so thank you.
Other councillors?
Thank you, Mr. Naddo. Thank you, Chief Kirkham.
Thank you very much.
Under Agenda Item 6.1, the Public Library Board, Matthew McDonald, Chief Executive Officer, and Rebecca Verdoni, Acting Business Administrator are in attendance.
Welcome to Council, Mr. McDonald, Ms. Verdoni.
Thank you, Mayor and council. First, I want to express my appreciation for your approval of the bylaw establishing the Sault Ste. Marie Public Library that you passed at your October 14 meeting. It's really nice to finally have that done in time for 130th anniversary. Thank you for recognizing the importance of the library to our, our community. Today, we're here to present the library's 2026 operational budget. We have deliberately kept our request to a 2.8% increase, the same inflationary rate applied to city departments. This must increase is necessary to manage rising costs and contracted wages, to maintain the James L. McIntyre Centennial Library, and to support general operations essential to services that our residents rely on. In the budget before you, you will see a significant increase to our maintenance and alterations line. This is not really a luxury, it's a necessity. Our building is now 58 years old, showing clear signs of wear. Five years ago, we spent $52,000 to maintain the facility. This year, that cost has already surpassed $74,000, and the year isn't finished. And just today, I approved an expense to replace a door operator so that we can maintain accessibility within the facility. But we have faced flooding, mechanical failures, asbestos concerns, and a series of smaller but cumulatively significant issues in my time. Yet despite these challenges, the James L. McIntyre Centennial Library remains a beautiful, iconic building that is worth investing in. It is a cornerstone of our downtown and a place thousands turn to for learning, connection, and community. We do try to do our part to keep costs down. We continue to make fiscally responsible decisions wherever possible. For example, this year, we began a project to replace our integrated library system, a change that not only improves public service, but will save approximately $15,000 annually. In addition to our operational request, we are here with a supplemental budget request, one that is critical to us. This is now the fourth time that I have come before you with the same plea, and we need full-time security at our downtown location. full-time security at our downtown location. The first time the request was denied. In the following two years, we did receive partial funding, for which we're very grateful. And that was enough to cover evening and weekend coverage with security. Fortunately, it hasn't been sufficient. This year, we experienced a very serious incident during a time when no security was scheduled. It was a moment that made one thing unmistakably clear, that safety of our patrons and volunteers cannot depend on the time of day. In response, the library board made the difficult decision to implement full-time security immediately. This was not originally budgeted, and to make it possible, drew on cash reserves and knowingly operated in a deficit position. We did this because the alternative, risking people's safety, was not acceptable to us. But this approach is not sustainable. We should not have to choose between balancing our budget and protecting the people who walk through our doors every day, including our 53 full-time and part-time staff, a larger dedicated group of volunteers, all of whom are committed to delivering high-quality service efficiently and responsibly to our community. The library serves everyone, children, seniors, newcomers, job seekers, individuals experiencing homelessness, students, families, everyone. It's one of the few truly public spaces left in our community, and we are committed to keeping it safe. Today, we need council's commitment as well. So I'm asking you to provide funding required for full-time security at the James L. McIntyre Centennial Library. It is not an enhancement of service. It is not really optional for us at this point. It is a necessity and one that directly affects the safety and well-being of our community. So it's a tough ask, but that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Verdi?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. You spoke quite clearly about the ask and why you need the security. You can count on me for my full support, and I'm hopeful that a majority of people around this council table will opt to, to fund this request. It's important that people there are safe. And you're telling us they aren't. So you'll have my support. I suspect you'll have a few more. We just got to get you over the hump and make sure there's half of us, okay? Thanks.
Appreciate it. Other councilors? Counselor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to presenter. Thank you very much for your presentation. With the downtown police hub that's been there now for six, nine months, has the crime reduced at the library?
It's hard to say whether or not there's a correlation, because we've also increased security in that time. We have seen an increase in response times from the police, but we don't see them all that often, except for when there is an issue. So in the recent years, we've given staff panic buttons, and they respond quite quickly to those. They did respond to this incident when we didn't have security on site, but management had to intervene in that time between when the call was made and when they arrived.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said there's been increase in response times? Do you mean an increase?
Like increase, like the decrease, sorry. They come much quicker than they had previously. We see them arriving sometimes within five minutes. And during summers, we've had them arrive on bicycles, the first responder, you know.
Thank you. Counselor Spina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the presenters for the presentation. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lamming. I don't think the library forms part of the downtown security program, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Spina, the downtown foot patrols are covering the main core. They are accessible if on emergency basis to be called for the library, but that does not consider the part of the patrol unit, patrol path to the library at this point in time.
Okay. While this item is being debated by council and being debated for budget, is it possible to reallocate those resources down to the library for a certain amount of hours per day? They're already in the downtown core. Is it easy just to say, hey, for the next couple of hours, you're at the library, just to offset some of their pressures and provide some added security there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Spina, we could investigate that further as you're likely where right now, patrols go from East Street all the way through to Ron Francis Way, and then they'll go back, and then they'll go on call, kind of off Queen Street as needed. So that's something we could look at.
Right. So if they're going from East Street, perhaps they can just travel south and head to the library for a few hours and spend some time there. And it may help offset some of their financial pressures, and they could maybe reallocate their own internal security now. I'm, you know, just giving some ideas here, but if that's something we could look at in the interim? Perfect. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, that can be worked out. I'm assuming that Mr. Lamming will be in contact with you, and that would be fantastic in the interim. Thank you.
That depends on what council approves for downtown security.
Correct. I'm sorry. And my questions were more about the meantime while we're debating all of this. I think that program remains at least until we have our budget debates, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Spina. That's correct.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Counselor Vezo Allen.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to Mr. McDonald. And I certainly love and appreciate the library and, and everything that you've been going through. In terms of incidents at the library, I know obviously that you record them. Has there been any trend as far as time of day, days of the week, that you have been able to determine from the data that you've collected?
Unfortunately, you can't really tell when an incident's going to occur.
Yeah.
Some of our most serious incidents have occurred during the day when it's administration office hours. So that one that happened that I referred to earlier this year that prompted the board to make security full-time, I'm not sure if you recall, the year previous, we had somebody actually in the ceiling and walls, and that cost us $8,000 with the damage that the library had to repair. And that also happened when security wasn't present.
Okay. Do the downtown ambassadors go to the library as well when they're on their route? Are you aware?
Yes, we love seeing them.
Yeah. Yeah, they do. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. And certainly, I think we can hopefully come to some sort of consensus so that you do have security at your library.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Vezo Allen.
Mr. McDonald, last year's presentation, you asked for $46,240 for security from nine to five, Monday to Friday.
So the previous year, we had asked for full-time, and that was the amount that we were given. And leading into that presentation, we were kind of given an impression that we wouldn't receive the full-time ask. So we limited our ask. We did ask for more than what we had previous, but we didn't expand it to the full-time hours. But we thought we could manage. And as time went on, we realized that with the severity of some of the incidents that were occurring, it was taking us away from our task of offering library services and just to remove people from the building and trying to keep people safe. So we did limit our ask last year. In previous years, we had asked for full-time. But this year, we're back to the point of asking for full-time hours.
Right. Okay. Yeah. So last year, you asked for $46,000 and change, received $45,000. That was from Monday to Friday, nine to five. And then is the 106 that's being requested this year, the difference between that $46,000 in full-time security? Or does that also include?
That includes the 45. So it costs us $106,000 for the full-time security, because we are quite often a 12-hour operation in the downtown, and we have evening, weekend hours. So that covers that entire allotment of hours.
So is your security $150,000 a year, or is it?
It's what's quoted in the presentation, 106.
But you received $45,000 last year.
Yes, but it was, it was a supplemental request, and so it wasn't guaranteed ongoing, as far as I'm aware.
We increased the operational budget by $45,000 last year on a permanent basis.
Was it a permanent basis?
Yes. Michelle, am I right about that? I've got, I pulled up the budget from last year, the minutes. We approved $45,000.
You know what? Steve's looking it up right now. Mr. Facy, I'll pass.
I just want to be clear. If we're looking for 106, or if we're looking for, you know, $60,000, $61,000, yeah. Because it makes a big difference to us.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just two minutes. I'll look up. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We can probably sort this out without you standing at the podium. So unless there are any other questions, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And I have a motion by councilors Dufour and Gardie that this council shall now adjourn.
All in favor?
That will take us to the
Regular council meeting.
Regular council meeting. And I've got a motion by councilors Dufour and Gardie, resolve that minutes of regular council meeting of November 17, 2025 be approved?
All in favor? That carries.
New declarations of junior interest?
Any conflicts on the regular council agenda? Saying none?
Motion by councilors Vezo Allen and Gardie, resolve that the agenda for November 24, 2025 city council meeting as presented be approved?
All in favor? That carries.
Under Agenda Item 6.1, Battery Energy Storage Solution, Nathan Roscoe, Director of Development, EDP Renewables Canada, and Joshua Vaidyan, Manager Wind Energy Team, Samsung Renewable Energy, Inc., are in attendance.
Welcome to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your patience as we sorted through a lot of numbers.
It's no problem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilor, city staff, and community members. My name is Joshua Vaidyan. I'm a project development manager at Samsung Renewable Energy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As part of the ISO LT2 Window One Capacity RFP, I'd like to present the Gateway Best Project. Next slide, please. This project is a co-development between EDP and Samsung Renewable Energy. Next slide, please. Both companies have a proven track record of developing and operating renewable projects. We build our projects with the intention of owning and operating them long-term alongside our First Nations partners. As such, we are currently in detailed discussions with the local First Nations to secure partnership before our bid submission. Next slide, please. The next few slides showcase the experience that both companies have with respect to development and operations with the North America and worldwide. In the interest of time, I will skip over this section so that we can discuss the proposed project and get to the meat of the material. So our proposed project site is located at 1032 Great Northern Road in Sault Ste. Marie. The major intersection is Great Northern Road and Third Line. The project itself is set back about 600 meters off of Great Northern Road to the east. It's, the project would be built within the industrial zone, delineated there in blue. And one of the key attributes of this site is that it's very close to the transmission corridor that you find running east and west on the south side there. So our intention would be to connect to one of the existing transmission lines and supply energy to the grid. Next slide, please. So as part of our engagement, we met with the deputy fire chief early in November. We had an in-person meeting with her. We discussed the project's best, best practices and field of questions related to fire safety. Our commitment is to adhere to the strict design and installation standards currently in place, provide active monitoring during operation phase, and allow the, which will allow the project to offering a 24/7 monitoring throughout the operation phase of the project. And finally, working alongside local fire services to ensure that they are provided site-specific safety and fire response training. With respect to our development timeline, currently, we're at the stage where we're at the municipal support resolution. We're all gathered here today for that. Should that be received, our plan is to submit for, submit December 18th as part of the RFP submission bid. The long-term contract award is slated to be January, June 2026. And upon award, we would begin completing our environmental permitting, building permitting approvals, site plan approvals, which we anticipate to be about two years. Construction would be slated for about a year, and our planned operation start date is 2030. And this would be a 20-year fixed capacity contract with the ISO. So some of the economic benefits that the project offers, just give me a second, please. So our proposed 200-megawatt project would generate $600,000 annually from the start of commercial operation for the life of the contract, which is 20 years. Our plan is to earmark $25,000 annually for community-based initiatives, and that would be for the life of the contract, which is 20 years. Additional to that, there would be $10,000 that's earmarked also for community benefit throughout the construction phase of the project. And any of the additional tax revenue that gets generated from the project would be supplied to the city. With respect to employment, we estimate approximately 100 jobs during the construction phase. During operation, we anticipate about one to two jobs, including facility maintenance that would be required for, throughout the different, throughout the seasons for the life of the project. We are committed to sourcing as many of our construction needs as possible from the local region, which will also provide additional economic boost. Finally, with respect to community outreach, we conducted in-person engagement with neighboring businesses and residents in early November. We presented, we presented the project. We also handed out a project fact sheet or brochure, pretty much highlighting what our project is, and more, speak more generally about battery storage. We've established a project website, gatewaybest.ca. We've also informed the residents that they can access that site for additional information. And our current plan, our short-term plan, is to host a community open house in January 2026 of this coming year. That concludes our presentation. Before we go to the question and answer session, I just want to mention that my counterpart at EDPR is here, Nathan Roscoe, as well as Chris Olson from Olson Environmental Health Management, who's our fire safety subject matter expert. They can both speak to any specific questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to the presenters. Thank you for coming. It means a lot to have you here face to face. First question, are you proposing this battery storage in other municipalities? Are you looking at others?
Through you, Mayor, our only project that we're submitting is for this, for the city.
Just for Sault Ste. Marie?
That is correct.
Okay. And just educate me further. Is it because of the iOS process, you can only pick one location?
Through you, Mayor, not necessarily. Our intention was to identify the best site that has the highest probability of getting awarded. Being up in the Sioux also offers rated criteria points, which the ISO is kind of pushing more development further north. So throughout our development planning, we identified Sault Ste. Marie as a great location to build out a battery storage facility.
Okay. Help me understand a little bit more. Can you give me three criterias? Why Sault Ste. Marie?
So one of the criterias is capacity in the grid. So the lines that we're, the line that we're connecting to has ample capacity, and hence, we're proposing a 200-megawatt project. Additionally, the rated criteria points that are awarded for being up north also help you increase your chances of getting awarded a project. And I would say, yeah, I would say those are the two, the two primary reasons.
Two primary reasons. Okay.
Sorry, I can't think of a third one right now.
Okay. And I'm still trying to wrap my head around, you know, the wattage and so forth. When you look at the other projects you have, I think you mentioned the United States, would this be a small, medium project?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this project is in line with what we generally build out. We mainly focus on transmission-scale projects. We mainly focus on transmission-scale projects, and our projects have been between the range of, range of 100 megawatts to 270 megawatts. Similar to EDPR, we do build larger projects, and this would fall right within that.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. With regards to, obviously municipalities care about jobs. Can you elaborate on how many jobs would this potentially create for our city? Are we looking at five, 10? I know you can't give us this big, exact number, but just help me understand.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So during the construction phase, there are going to be jobs, construction-related jobs. We're anticipating about 100 for the size of the project that we have. Since a battery facility doesn't require a lot of full-time staff, we're anticipating that we would only need one or two during the life of the project. But there will be facility maintenance contracts, we would need snow clearing, we would need routine maintenance around the project facility. All of that will be hired locally.
Okay. And if I'm seeing your map correctly, this is close to our, this is part of our industrial park, is that correct? Maybe you can see that picture again?
It's, it's not an industrial park.
It's not industrial.
Across the street.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to verify that. So it's not actually right encompassing in our industrial park, okay. Okay, just two other questions. So I think in your slide, you said $25,000 annually. So with regards to the fees, can you define that a little bit better, 25,000 annually? It's not our taxes, it's 25,000 as an additional?
That's correct. Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. So this $25,000 would be earmarked for, you know, communities within, or initiatives within the community that would like funding. And these are programs that we actually offer for our wind projects in Southern Ontario. So this is nothing new to us.
I think Mr. Mayor can add to that a little bit.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. So the proponents are talking about two different types of community benefits. So one would be up to $600,000 annually that would come to the municipality, which is a, based on the size of the project, so much per megawatt. And then in addition to that, they would have a community-based fund of 25,000 that groups could apply to. So there's two separate things there, and then in addition, there would be the taxes that is in addition to those two other amounts.
Okay. So the 600,000 and 25,000, so when you say groups can apply, just community groups? Or how, how can that benefit us? Can we use that money for roads? Can we use that money for environmental projects and so forth? Is there like any restrictions?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth, the 600,000 would be for the municipality to determine how we want to spend that. So we could put that towards roads, we could put it towards any municipal costs. The 25,000 is available for community-based organizations that wish to apply, or organizations that the project chooses to support within the community. So the group, should they be successful with the ISO proposal, will be establishing this fund and handing out that 25,000 to various groups.
Okay. And two final questions. When you talk about taxes, are they taxed like an industry? Probably not. They're definitely not taxed residential. Are they taxed, you know, environmentally? Through you, Mayor, to Ms. Shelley Shell, like which category would they be in?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. I don't know, I'd have to check and see what a comparable one is in, but it would either be commercial or industrial.
Okay. Thank you. And to our presenters, through you, Mayor, once again, thank you for coming. And just a quick question out of the box. Looking at your competitors down in the United States, they have established something similar, but what they do is they establish them in the parking lots where cars can park underneath the solar panels, and yet, especially in the winter areas when the snow is not going on to the cars. Have you considered something unique like that?
Councillor Hollingsworth, this is battery storage, not solar panels, so.
Well, that's true, but still, okay. Thank you, that's all.
Councillor Vezel, thank you councillor Hollingsworth. Councillor Vezel.
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Chief Johnson. Chief, in terms of the fire safety and battery storage, I know they met with the deputy. Do you have anything to add or any concerns or any experience with battery storage and fire safety?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezel. With the information that the group provided to our deputy chief, I was briefed after it, and as of right now, I have no concerns. I think the fire risks are very low, as I'm sure the specialists could comment on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor, and thank you, Chief, for the words that you said. We did have a really good productive meeting with the deputy fire chief. And with any battery storage facility now being built in North America, they're relatively new in Canada. We've got a lot more experience in the United States where we have projects that are much larger, some that are smaller. For example, there was just the groundbreaking here in Ontario, there's a premier attended in eastern Ontario for a 450-megawatt that's already been awarded. That was, I believe, last week. Battery storage safety has come a long way since 2018. The first code, which is called NFP 855, or the National Fire Protection Association in the US, had developed the first code in 2000. It was updated in 2023, and actually, the latest version for 2026 was just released. So if this facility would be built, it would be built to that code and standard. Fires are very rare now in these types of facilities. They're individual containers. So for this 200-megawatt facility, you'd have, give or take, just over 200 individual containers. It is rare that one of those potentially could catch fire. If they do, as the chief's saying, the next step would not be waste too much more of the chief and his staff's time right now. If the project was awarded, then you go into another significant phase, which requires them to develop what's first called a hazard mitigation analysis for the site. We work with the fire departments identifying, you know, here's where the closest people are, here's where the services are, this is how they'd access the site. Then they develop an emergency response plan in coordination with the chief and his staff. That all gets done prior to construction. And then ultimately, prior to it being energized, the firefighters would be given training, they'd be walked through the site, and that can happen annually at the discretion of the fire chief. Really, what we're looking at is a similar risk to, let's say, a substation fire, which are, again, extremely rare. You have substations throughout the community. If they do occur, what happens? We allow the fire, the fire department is not asked, in fact, they're not to put water on one of these containers. The container consumes itself. The couple that we've had in the US over the last year typically take somewhere in the four to maybe six or eight hour timeframe, similar to a transformer and a substation. All that training's done, then it's turned back over to the company to deal with it appropriately, trying to minimize the time that the chief and his firefighters would have on site.
And in terms of the specialized training costs, would that be costs that your company would absorb for firefighters, or would that be something that we would be responsible for?
That's entirely borne by the companies themselves. So not only the development of the emergency response plan, the hazard mitigation analysis, all of the training. And, you know, at this point, when we talked to the deputy fire chief, it was about an hour or so that she gave, she was courteous enough to give her time. We don't anticipate that there'd be any specialized equipment that your fire department would need. That being said, if there was a request for something like additional handheld gas detectors, something, there's no specialized equipment needed, but if there was something that the fire department felt that they needed while we're developing that emergency response plan, again, those are all borne by the company, not by the city, not by the chief and his budget.
Thank you so much. My only other question is for the community engagement piece. So, thank you. You did hold some consultation with some of the neighbors. Could you just give a brief overview as to, you know, how many folks attended and the feedback and that sort of thing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So it was actually event, we actually went door to door.
Okay.
We canvassed across, around the project site, so all the properties that abutted the project, we went door to door and we, we spoke to the residents. It was received positively, in my opinion, for the residents that were at home. We did leave brochures so that they had an idea of, of what we're, you know, presenting. And, yeah, the conversations, I would say, were taken really well. They were excited that there was going to be new economic, or industry, coming back and reviving the city. So it was, it was a good conversation, conversation.
And in terms of you leaving the brochures, I noticed on your website, there is like under community a contact us ability. Have you had any feedback or any emails from folks that you've dropped off brochures to?
Through you, Mayor, not at the moment.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Nothing, nothing further, and welcome to Sault Ste. Marie.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Vezel. Other councillors with questions? Councillor Bruny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the presenter. Just curious, after 20 years, what happens to the containers?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, we go through the deep commissioning process, and what we do is we remove all the battery storage, the foundations, the concrete, and we reclaim the land back to its original state. That's, that's what happens at the end of the life.
You own the property or is it returned back to the city?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is actually an option to lease. This is a private landowner, and we have, yeah, we have the lease to the property, yeah.
20 years. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other councillors? We've lost our clerk to do a vote on the matter, so we'll just give it one second. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
Councillors Dufour and Gardie, resolve that the report of the manager of business attraction dated November 24, 2025 concerning municipal support resolution, proposed battery storage project, Samsung, be received and that council approved the municipal support resolution as outlined below. Whereas the proponent is proposing to construct and operate a long-term capacity services project located on municipal project lands as defined, and with the characteristics outlined in the table below under the long-term to capacity services window one, request for proposals issued by the independent electricity system operator. And whereas the capitalized terms not defined herein have the meaning ascribed to them in the LT2C1RFP. And whereas the proponent has delivered no later than 60 days prior to the proposal submission deadline, a pre-engagement confirmation notice to an applicable local body administrator in respect of the municipal project lands that includes the details outlined in the table below, except for the unique project ID, which should only be required as part of the pre-engagement confirmation notice if available. And the unique project ID of the long-term capacity services project, LT2C1-3250. Legal name of the proponent, Gateway Battery Energy Storage System, Inc. Name of the long-term capacity services project, Gateway Battery Energy Storage System, Inc. Technology of the long-term capacity service project, Battery Energy Storage System. Maximum potential contract capacity of the long-term capacity services project, 200 megawatts. There are the pins for 1032 Great Northern Road. And whereas pursuant to the LT2C1RFP, if the long-term capacity services project is proposed to be located in whole or in part on municipal project lands, the proposal must include municipal support confirmation, which may be in the form of a municipal resolution in support of proposal submission. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie supports the submission of a proposal for the long-term capacity services project located on the municipal project lands. This resolution's sole purpose is to satisfy the mandatory requirements of Section 4.2C3 of the LT2C1RFP and may not be used for the purpose of any other form of approval in relation to the proposal or long-term capacity services project or for any other purpose. The proponent has undertaken or has committed to undertake indigenous and community engagement activities in respect of the long-term capacity services project to the satisfaction of the municipality. The municipal project land does not include lands designated as prime agricultural areas in the city of Sault Ste. Marie's official plan, where the municipal project lands does include lands designated as prime agricultural areas in the city of Sault Ste. Marie's official plan as of the date of this resolution. The municipal project lands are not designated as specialty crop areas. The long-term energy project is not a non-rooftop solar project. The proponent has satisfied the AIA Component 1 requirement to the satisfaction of the local municipality. And if the proponent is selected as a selected proponent under the LT2C1RFP, the council of city of Sault Ste. Marie will engage in good faith with the selected proponent to enable the selected proponent to complete the AIA Components 2 and 3 requirement.
Council, all in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to consent. Nope, that should be popping up on eScribe. Hey, there we go. You can vote on your computers as well, council, but it did carry unanimously from my hand count.
So those, that will bring us to consent.
Council items on consent. Councillor Vezel.
Just 7.7. Mayor, on the green initiatives.
Yep, go ahead.
One comment, one question.
Okay.
So the clerk, just want to say, such a great initiative and being brought forth by a student, which I think is a really testament to what our youth are capable of, and very happy to support that. And then just with the Helping Hands e-commerce platform project, the $5,300, is that just going to producing the website or the, the tech capable of doing the e-commerce and online? I know Emily's not here, so it's probably Mr. Lamming.
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezel. Sorry.
Lisa B.
Where I've not been drinking tonight. So obviously, I'm, I'm filling in, but my understanding is that it is going to develop the website as well as help to initiate the online POS system.
Okay. I believe there's a gentleman here who might be able to answer the question, am I understanding your hand up correctly? Go ahead. Are you from Helping Hands? Okay.
Eric Holmes, a board member with Helping Hands. I also wrote the proposal. It's intended to essentially increase the business operations of your thrift store since by nature of the operation, an item sold is an item diverted from landfill. And it will hook in with a pre-existing $10,000 per month Google Ad grant to essentially drive traffic digitally and then create that awareness and then be able to hook in together to be able to bring in more people, more traffic. So that answers the question.
Thank, thank you so much.
Other questions, councillor Vezel?
That's it.
Anyone else on 7.7? Councillor Vezel, and other items on consent?
I am finished.
Other councillors with items on consent? Councillor Kinnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, 7.2.
Go ahead. Before we start on that, actually, I will just make my comments at the outset, which is that any amount of time we spend, I would say, arguing over this, is time that is not spent constructively and time on which we could be spending, time that we could be spending, I should say, on matters that are important to our constituents. And so from my perspective, the whole exercise, including any deliberations we have tonight, are better served by putting our heads together and working on behalf of our constituents. And I think it is doubly unfortunate that in this report, we have spent as much this year as we have combined in past years on the integrity commissioner. With all that said, this process is set out and mandated by the provincial government, and we are obliged to follow it. And so I understand why this is before us. I just don't think it's a good use of our time. Integrity Commissioner is here, and I'll pass the floor back over to you, councillor Kinnick.
All right. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to our integrity commissioner, Ms. Blunt. How did you ensure independence and impartiality when the councillor's interpretation was accepted as fact while the complainant's perceptions were repeatedly labeled as subjective or taken out of context?
Could you please repeat that question?
So how did you ensure independence and impartiality when the councillor's interpretation was accepted as fact while the complainant's perceptions were repeatedly labeled as subjective or taken out of context?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Kinnick. There was no evidence submitted? There was no evidence submitted by the complainants to substantiate those complaints.
Okay. Next question, so why was the definition of conduct under the code not applied to the councillor's tone and wording towards women, racialized individuals, and certain groups of people, even though the code of conduct prohibits insulting, indecent expressions towards members of the public?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Kinnick. I dealt with the wording that was in the post, not an interpretation or any individual's interpretation of that wording.
To quote you from our 2003 annual review to council, given the Integrity Commissioner is not a lawyer, the councillor was referred to a lawyer, Mr. John Hart. In the past, you have referred and consulted out because you are not a lawyer. Why for this investigation did you choose to investigate yourself?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Kinnick. I was capable of undertaking this investigation, and I did so.
Okay. So, in this investigation, you cited in your conclusion the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, which is the highest level of Canadian law. Are you have any legal background or standing to make judgments on or professional opinion on law?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Kinnick. I did quote the legislation. I'm capable of reviewing legislation, but I did have my opinion reviewed by Mr. Hart to ensure that it was legally sound. But I did the investigation myself.
Okay. Next question is, excuse me. In the, sorry, in the spring of 2025, you were investigated by the ombudsman, and there was recommendations made in the investigation findings of June 2025 specifically regarding our city's code of conduct. Can you expand on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Kinnick. I don't understand what you're saying. Could you please elaborate?
Yep. So, in the spring of 2025, there was an ombudsman's investigation based on a complaint that was, or the investigation proceeded, and the investigation concluded in June 2025. Specifically, in the investigation, there was recommendations, and in the conclusion, there was specifically stated about our code of conduct being overly vague and not overly clear.
Okay. Councillor Kinnick. First off, the question should be on the Integrity Commissioner's report that's on the agenda. Second off, we determine what the code of conduct is, not the Integrity Commissioner. We hire her to review complaints that are submitted, but it is up to us if there is a vagueness in the code of conduct to correct that.
Okay, so then my question to that would be, in that report that was concluded and recommendations made, was it given to staff, or what happens with that then? That's what I want to know with that report. Where does it stop once the ombudsman made a finding? Why is, why did council, we did not know about this information? Or was it never reported to us?
Madam Clerk, do you know? There was a recommendation, this is the first I'm hearing of it, but there was a recommendation from the ombudsman?
This is complete news to me.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm just trying to figure out where the disconnect is, that's all. Because in that investigation, it said it was, our code of conduct was not overly clear and vague. And today, also in this report, there's a recommendation to amend our code of conduct because, I would assume because of the same reason in this case. Okay. All right. All right, then, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. It's good.
I guess to you or Michelle or Councillor Kinnick, what was the date of that ombudsman's report?
I'm hearing about it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Gardi. I'm not aware of any ombudsman investigation or report that has come to us with respect to our code of conduct. Perhaps it had to do with the provincial review.
Other councillors on 7.2? Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I'm not sure if it's to the city clerk or to Mr. Ver, but I think this is important. This investigation, I was under the impression, was not requested by any person on council. Is that right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Hollingsworth, that's correct.
Okay, so help me understand, it came from a public?
There were four?
Yeah.
Complaints from residents of the community.
Okay, but not from?
Not from this council.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Any other councillors? Pudum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Ms. Blunt for the report, and I do want to start off by saying that I don't believe that there was a winner, that there could have been a winner in this situation. But this decision gives, hopefully gives everyone in the community closure. This situation has been incredibly difficult for me, for my family, and for many members of this community. Disagreeing with me is one thing, but the level of vitriol thrown my way has been quite another, though that has been a very eye-opening experience in the worst way. I am grateful to those who have reached out, whether it be social media, cards, whatever was sent my way, but most of all to those who were brave enough to stand up for me in rooms that I was not present in. When I got into municipal politics, my motto was, "I will change politics, I will not let politics change me." And that remains my true north. I was elected by the people of Ward 3 to make real tangible positive change for them and for our entire city. I'm right where I'm supposed to be, and I will continue to advocate for that, for what I believe is right, no matter the level of intimidation that I may face for it.
Pudum, please, on the Integrity Commissioner specifically?
Okay, so you don't, I, I, I'm not allowed to make comments because in the code of conduct, due to, like, in an investigation, usually the person is given a moment to speak to it. I have been really taken a good kicking for nine weeks, so I just, maybe one more minute, and that's it.
Try and keep it brief, please.
I push for this community with my whole heart, and I've been told that is a political mistake and that sharing my opinion is dangerous to my political career, but I can tell you that doing things differently is not a mistake to me. And it is more dangerous to be silent in the face of injustice than it is to speak up. I'm different than most of those who can, who have filled the seat before me. And when I campaigned for this seat, one of the main complaints I heard was that in previous years, council had historically been what people would call an old boys' club. So I'm sitting at a table that was not built for me. And I've worked and will continue to work to dismantle the systems that have kept women, people of color, and 2S LGBTQIA+ individuals from holding space at these tables. The backlash I have faced for that is a sign that things in Sault Ste. Marie are changing. They are headed in the right direction because when we are successfully changing systems, there is always pushback.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Dufour?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Ms. Blunt for a very thorough and complete report. Specifically, points nine and 10 at the beginning, where you addressed the issue of anonymity and traced it back to a very specific line in the code of conduct that was very helpful. Thank you. And I appreciate the dual roles that you have to play in first filtering through the code of conduct and then the applicable legislation through the municipal act. And I think that'll be one of, hopefully, a number of things that we'll take a look at as we look to upgrade and amend and improve the clarity in our code of conduct. So thank you for pointing that out, and thank you for a thorough report. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other councillors, questions on this report? Seeing none, that's a consent matter, so we'll vote on it as a collective. Councillor Kinnick, other than 7.2, other items on consent? Nope, that's all. Anyone else with items on consent? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Councillor Dufour and Gardi, result that all items listed under date November 24, 2025, Agenda Item 7, Consent Agenda, be approved as recommended.
All in favour? That carries.
Bring us to Agenda Item 9.1, a motion by Councillors Kinnick and Brunie, whereas the Integrity Commissioner's report dated November 11, 2025, recommended that the Corporation of the City of Sault Ste. Marie develop a formal social media policy for members of council and local boards, and whereas members of council and local boards increasingly use social media platforms for communication, community engagement, and the expression of personal and official viewpoints, and whereas the absence of a dedicated social media policy may lead to uncertainty regarding expectations for online conduct, privacy, and the separation of personal and official communication channels, and whereas establishing clear and consistent guidelines will enhance transparency, accountability, professionalism, and public confidence in municipal governance, whereas the development of such a policy aligns with the principles and intent of the city's code of conduct for council and local boards and supports procedural fairness and responsible communication practices. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to develop a formal social media policy for members of council and report back to council.
Councillor Kinnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's disappointing that we even need to bring this resolution forward. The Integrity Commissioner's report makes it clear that our current approach to social media isn't meeting the standards the public expects or the standards we should expect of ourselves. A social media policy shouldn't be something we need to debate in 2025. Professional, respectful, online conduct should be a given, but the lack of clarity has created confusion, and unfortunately, we've seen examples where clear guidelines could have prevented the issues. This policy is about restoring consistency, accountability, and public trust. It's unfortunate it has come to this, but it's necessary. I look forward to staff bringing back a draft so we can finally put proper expectations in place. Thank you.
Councillor Kinnick, Councillor Brunie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To be very blunt, I think we wasted 15 minutes of our time tonight, and I think this social media policy is required, and hopefully we can introduce it very, very quickly and move forward with the council. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Brunie, Councillor Dufour?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of questions about the resolution. Happy to support it, for one. I do think it's a good resolution. I don't think it's disappointing that we haven't had one yet. I think that when you look at kind of the different structure of our council versus a lot of other councils, you know, it's very common for councillors in other jurisdictions to have staff members that help manage their social media, and so it makes a lot more sense that they would have social media policies to help govern that. In our case, obviously, our social media and our communications as councillors is kind of done on our own time and under our own umbrella, so to speak. So I don't find it that surprising that we haven't had a social media policy, but I definitely see how the code of conduct could be improved by having one. One of the questions I had is the operative clause for the resolution, be it resolved that staff be directed to develop a formal social media policy for members of council. Is there a reason that members of local boards were left off of there even though they're covered by the code of conduct?
Thank you, Councillor Dufour. Just with my, discussing with my seconder, we felt more comfortable in the final statement, just putting back to council, but in the first whereas, it says members of council and local boards.
And then my second question is maybe more of a procedural one now. Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but the code of conduct would generally, and its appendices, would generally go through the procedural bylaw review committee first and then back to council? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Dufour. No, we would bring the updates to code of conduct to council as a whole. When it was, when the legislation was first introduced and we did our first one, there was a committee that made recommendations, but in this case, staff would bring it with input from the Integrity Commissioner. Having said that, with Bill 9 going to third reading, we are expecting a standardized provincial code of conduct in the near future.
Okay. Okay. Good to know. So that's all my questions. Thank you. Happy to support.
Thank you, Councillor Dufour. Councillor Vezel Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm proposing a friendly amendment. As per what Ms. Tzinski just said, I don't think it's just social media policy. We have stated that our code of conduct does need a refresh. So instead of just saying that there is a social media policy, I would like to propose an amendment that it just is a blanket, that we review our code of conduct based on recommendations. Because I don't think that this needs to be, like, directed to one thing because we are looking at changes based on legislation.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Vezel Allen, I would, were it not for this legislation that's on the horizon, I think that makes sense for it to travel together, given that it may be that that provincial code of conduct is legislated shortly, I think it's probably wiser to keep them independent.
Independent of each other?
The social media policy and the code of conduct.
Separate.
A separate document, but would end up being evaluated together, but I think keep them separate because of this legislative process right now.
Okay. I just want to make sure that there's clarity for staff and that we're not duplicating what needs to happen.
We do have quite a laundry list of recommended amendments to the code of conduct. We're just sort of waiting for, now that, now that that Bill 9 has gone to third reading, I would hate to bring that forward at the, and have those two things be on the table at the same time when the provincial one will overrule.
Okay.
Is that all, Councillor Vezel?
Correct.
Thank you. Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to probably the city clerk, just for clarification, I understand this resolution is focusing on social media, right? Do we have something right now that hovers off just communication in general by us? Like, if we do a press release or, you know, other forms that are not technically defined as social media? Do we have anything right now?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Hollingsworth, yes, there is a media relations policy and an information flow policy.
Okay. Out of curiosity, can we just, like, tweak that to include social media so we have not, like, would that be more efficient? Would it be better to have a one more umbrella policy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Hollingsworth, I don't see a problem with having a social media policy standing on its own, and perhaps it's better to stand on its own given how technologies change.
Okay. Okay. And you're right, as technology is changing, who knows what's two, five years from now? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on 9.1? I would just say that, you know, this is the recommendation of our Integrity Commissioner, which we should be taking, and so I support this for those reasons. So with that, we could have a vote on the matter? All in favour? Any opposed? That carries. Thank you.
Agenda Item 9.2, I have a motion by Councillors Hollingsworth and Spina, whereas the city of Sault Ste. Marie is focused on creating a vibrant downtown for the entire community and tourists to enjoy, whereas the community and the surrounding area has a number of natural and cultural attractions that are currently promoted through social media websites and the Ontario Tourism Centre. And whereas there is an opportunity for the city to leverage empty retail space for experiential marketing campaigns to promote the natural gifts and events taking place in and around the community, and whereas approximately six years ago, Josh Ingram, manager of the Downtown Association, along with Ward 2 councillor Hollingsworth, did a pilot program promoting the community in empty storefronts at an economical cost. And whereas filling empty storefronts with tourist promotional materials by using large-format window graphics QR codes and decals creates vibrant window displays that help spruce up these windows while engaging the public, and whereas this practice is commonly utilized in shopping malls with great success until the space is leased, and whereas these empty buildings are natural advertising tools that can promote other existing businesses and community attractions at a low cost. Now therefore be it resolved that tourism and public relations work closely with the Downtown Committee to draft a plan to execute a method to utilize these empty spaces for experiential marketing campaigns that can... experiential marketing campaigns that can benefit existing businesses and tourism.
Counselor Hollingsworth. No, Ward 1 Counselor Hollingsworth, not Ward 2 Counselor Hollingsworth as referred to in the motion.
Exactly, because I have two great councillors of Ward 2. So, this is just, I don't want to get into a non-governance piece, but this was a success. And I believe a few years ago, we did it for less than like $3,000. And I know that we're driven to make sure that the empty spaces are going to be filled, and they eventually will be filled, which is excellent, but why not promote all our wonderful gifts? And this is not a new idea. We see it in other communities, and as I said, in shopping malls and plazas. So I just want to pass this on to the committee, and I hope they dive into it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Spina? Happy to, it's, word means it best, I'm good. Seeing no other questions on the matter, we can vote on it? All in favor? That carries.
And I have a motion by Councillors Kaputo and Hollingsworth, that bylaw 2025-160 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the agreement between the city and Gateway Battery Energy Storage System, Inc., for proposed battery storage project in the form of a municipal support resolution be passed in open council this 24th day of November 2025?
All in favor? Carries.
And I have a motion by Councillors Dufour and Gardi that this council now adjourn?
All in favor? That carries.